Why that's on the back?
Perfect. And then I would like to just sit down here and you can put me in front of the night. So don't worry, and so just sit down. Even if it's on the wall, you'll have a brush. Okay. I got program guys. Great. And this is what's at some thing too.
I say that now.
Try to make it embarrassing.
Or did you have to apply on the years ago?
I don't want to look on the set today.
So if not. Shouldn't it just follow up?
Yeah.
I want to do my meeting as the largest.
Four one four six. And I log in then.
Okay. I need to construct for him. He gets the that's something.
On the road, please. Here. I'm sorry, Mary Mitchell, here. Vice Mayor Brodom.
Here.
Councilman Santi.
Here.
Councilman Behead.
Here.
Councilman Vasquez.
Here.
There's a forum present.
Thank you. We ask that you rise if you are able and join us in the invocation by Councilman Vasquez.
Heavenly Father, as we gather together, we thank you for your endless goodness to us. Thank you for all the skills and talents you have given us and for everyone who was part of this council. We pray that you will provide us with with great wisdom and insight as we discuss our work plans and make decisions about the future. We open our hearts to you now and invite your Holy Spirit to be present among us. And we ask, Lord, that you bless our friend and community leader, James Fulton, that he have a quick and speedy recovery. We ask all of this in your name. Amen. Amen.
Please join us for the flegemeetings.
Flegemeetings. The fire on the island of South America. And to the public, the Spanish, the on the God, the individual, the liberty and justice.
Welcome, everyone, to our council, regular council meeting for January 8th. It's nice to see so many of you here and welcome to those of you that are joining us virtually. We're going to get started with the awards and presentations. And so our first presentation is someone that I met just this week and I asked him to to make a presentation to the city about this program called Arch on the Road, which is, we're all familiar with the Arch Center, the Performing Arts Center, the, you know, which is a really big venue and cultural resource here in Miami-Dade County. And so we have the honor of having Salem Yates, who is the manager of Outreach. Is it Community Engagement? And he's going to tell us about the program, the Arch on the Road program.
So greetings, salutations, everyone. Thank you so much, Mayor Mitchell, or Maria Mitchell, Mayor, for the invitation. And as you mentioned, I am the manager of Community Engagement at the Arch Center. Just to give you a quick high level overview, we've been in existence for about 17 years. And during that time, we have served about 120,000 residents where we've actually brought the performing arts to the actual communities. And so our overall idea is to broaden the site sound and the participation of what the performing arts can do when we extend it beyond our walls. Right? So some of those programs include Family Fest, where we partner with Arts Department, Free Gospel Sunday, as well as Broadway on this game, which is a fun program. If you've ever been to the Art Center, you've gone to a Broadway show. We try to have a nice activation on the plaza again, all for free, where even last week we had a shared lookalike concert or contest, but it was also a performance for the opening of the shared show. So again, just fun ways that we can bring the arts to the community. And so as Mayor mentioned, I'm here to talk about Arch on the Road, which is a program that was started during the pandemic. And in during the pandemic, we found a ways to not only employ artists, but also again groom the arts to communities that wouldn't otherwise have it. So we have a rolodex of artists where circus performers, musicians, dancers, you name it, whatever we can do to provide performing arts to a program that you may already have in place or that we can activate in your space is really our goal. And we did all that again because we just wanted to provide a high quality performance opportunity to the community. And the best part of our partners is that it's completely free to you all. So we pay the artist fees as well as we also pay for an outside coordinator to handle logistics with the venue and the artists. All we ask is that you provide space and opportunity. And so within this first year, we've had, or within this current season, we've had it at a food truck rally, we've had Arch on the Road at outside of the library. Actually, next Sunday, we'll be having it at the Skaya Museum and Gardens with the Cello Assassin playing for their MLK weekend, where they'll be presenting a lot of their black-owned businesses for their farmers markets, and the Cello Assassin will be performing. And then in February, we'll be at Mocha for their, at the Museum of Contemporary Art as well. So again, those just examples, and my hope is that we can get something programmed in Miami Springs as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And if the council have any questions, but I thought that this was a really good fit for, I reached out to Jaime Petrolanda, the president of the Historical Society, and also Juli Arias, the director of the Curtis Mansion, because I thought this would be a really good fit for them to coordinate something with Salem. For our community and our city will assist. The fact that it's free, that that's not something that we have to fund is also, you know, just makes it that much easier. So and it puts our city on the map, you know, it brings a reason for people to, from outside of, not just for our residents, but for people from outside of the community to come and visit our city and enjoy everything that we have to offer.
Right. I think it gives you a chance to expose expose your residents to arts that they may not even think that they may like. You know, we had our food truck rally, we had flamenco dances. I don't, at the point, Full Transparency was supposed to be a band at the time, but they had an emergency come up, so they weren't able to participate. So I was like, who can I quickly get? Happened to be flamenco dancers. Who would have thought that, you know, flamenco dancers, people would have loved it at a food truck rally? But now hopefully that brought some more patrons that'll want to come to the Arch Center.
Good. Wonderful. Does anyone have any questions?
That's good.
For Salem?
I did have a quick video if we have time, but if you don't, just if you all wanted a visual.
These programs are getting evolved, so we wanted to stretch the lines of our bands today, bring it out here to you.
We brought the art and entertainment into areas where it wasn't normally set.
I think it's good that you guys brought in the community, see people get together and, you know, build more, foster community. Yeah, I really enjoyed it.
We had a really good time. I'm always following the Arch Center's calendar coming to every event.
I really enjoyed today's performance. I'm glad that you all put it on, especially in the community as well. And the combination of the public task, the music, and being able to support children to that is wonderful, and the family-friendly environment is great, too.
It's important for people to see themselves reflected in different types of artichokes. And, you know, that's why events like this, community events, are really, really important.
All right. Thank you, Salem. And you already been, and Julie, and and Jaime Petrolanda there, so I'm sure you all present something, provide something really wonderful for the community in 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So let's move along to the Yard of the Month Award. And we do, it's my understanding, Erica, that the Yard of the Month recipient couldn't make the meeting, but I'll go ahead and announce it. It is Miriam Rodriguez, the Yard of the Month for January. Award goes to Miriam Rodriguez at 651 Falcon Avenue. So we'll be getting the certificate to her, and I want to encourage our residents, everyone in the community, if you have a chance this next month, to drive by 651 Fountain Avenue and enjoy her beautiful yard. And we're very grateful to her for beautifying Miami Springs. Okay, so now we move to the City Hall Lobby Artist of the Month. And this month, we have, and any of you, when you came in, I'm sure you were very impressed by the work of the talented artist Melissa Wallen, who is revealing hidden qualities through malability of oil painting. This Melissa, hi, want to present? We have a little certificate for you. We'd also like to take a picture with the council. Would you like to say a little bit about your artwork?
Sure.
No, just that I appreciate the opportunity to show here at City Hall. In addition to being an artist, I'm also the director of the Dela Cruz Collection. And over the Dela Cruz Collection, I, you know, assist Rosa and Carlos Dela Cruz in making sure that their mission of community goes beyond the walls of their collection. And this is my community, I live here, so it's really exciting for me to be able to share my art with the city. So thank you so much. Thank you so much, and thank you for beautifying City Hall for this month. Thank you, Shannon, for organizing this event.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you so much.
So much. Say that many points there.
We're gonna, excuse me, we're gonna take. We have the honor of having the entire board for the Miami Springs Historical Society here tonight, so we're gonna take a photo with them.
She'll have, she has the names. I need, I'm gonna get Shannon.
While we're waiting, I, I want to thank these members of the Historical Society for their passion, the the incalculable, calculable amount of time that you put into the Historical Society, the Historical Society of Miami Springs to protecting and preserving our rich history and not just preserving and protecting it, but letting us know about it, you know, letting us, giving us the opportunity to be aware of it for after ever.
We're all doing very.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. Um, we'll move on to open forum, and we have one resident signed up to speak at open forum, Mr. Limpe. Please.
So, sir. Very good evening to you. We live in Miami Springs and we're proud of it. Happy, healthy New Year to everyone. That was from 181 Hammond Drive. I brought a visual lady tonight to speak briefly. Think it might be best just hand it around so you can see it in person. So anyhow, I've had three of them over the year. I get them at garage sales. I'm sure there's someone who's been here longer than I have who can tell you about the origin of this nice tag. In the state of Florida, you only have to have an auto tag on the back of your car, which gives us an opportunity of doing on the, on the front of our cars. And there are 14,000 of us here. I don't think there are that many cars, but there's one thing about identity. And here in Miami Springs, we have a rich history, which most musical palates, 33 of them here in this county, they don't have as much history as we do. We go all the way back to Sam Snead and 100-year-old golf course, the oldest in South Florida. And I just think that if we could make this tag available, they shouldn't be handed out free. I don't believe in that. People value things when they have to pay something for. But just sell it at cost, have it available at City Hall, and put it on the website, on the city's website, where people can see it. And for those of us who are proud springers, we can show it with our car. And there's also this wonderful pin I was just handed by Councilman Vasquez, and I really appreciate it. This nice, I'm sorry, it's just a beautiful Miami Springs pin you can always put on your lapel. And again, these are small things, but they're, but they add up. And, 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 and there's, there's a lot to be said for identity. There really is. And this is one way you can spread it and put it again on the, on the website and make it available to everyone. And thank you, and a happy, healthy New Year to everyone, 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we will move to approval of council minutes for the December 11 regular meeting.
Motion to approve the council minutes for December 11, 36A.
Second. Any discussion? On the road, please. Vice Mayor Brodom.
Yes.
Councilman Santi.
Yes.
Councilman Behead.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Hi.
Mayor Mitchell. Yes, the motion carries. Move to public hearings, agenda item number nine, 9A. We have an ordinance, second reading. 8A, I'm sorry, I'm saying 9A, I'm reading 8A. Excuse me.
So, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. The ordinance on second reading is an ordinance of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, amending Chapter 150 zoning code of the city's Code of Ordinances to update accessory structure and swimming pool regulations, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. This ordinance is on second reading with no changes between first and second reading. City's planner is here, Alex, in case there's any questions on second reading, but this is fairly simple ordinance that just updates our pool regulations to be more consistent.
True, true.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve item 8A. Second.
Any discussion? On the road, please. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. We need a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to open it. We don't have anyone signed up for the public hearing, right? Okay. Even if you're not signed up, if anyone in the audience wants to speak on this item, welcoming you to speak during open public hearing, or if we have anyone online, if they want to call. Okay. All right, I'll close the public hearing. Call a vote, please. Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Sante?
Yes.
Councilman Behead?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Aye.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
We move to the consent agenda, item 9A. Do we have a resolution? It's not consent. It could be approved as.
Motion to approve 9A.
Second, the motion.
Any discussion? Call a vote, please. Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Sante?
Yes.
Councilman Behead?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Aye.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay, thank you. We move to item 11A, and we have a resolution. But before we go there with the resolution, I'd like to have Roger discuss this. And I just want to say, this is something that's very timely right now. So I felt it was important for us to have the opportunity to discuss it, even though it's a resolution on the agenda today. That doesn't mean that this was put on the agenda, you know, last week. The revised agenda, so I want to make sure we all have time to discuss it, to think about it, so we can defer to future, to take a vote on this. But I, I think it's important for us to hear about it and decide if it's something that we want to follow through on or not.
Absolutely. So, Mayor, members of the council, as you're very aware, usually prior to qualifying for candidacy, you have to fill out a Form 1 disclosure of financial interest. That Form 1 is fairly broad. It just requires you to identify your sources of income. Over the past legislative session, the Senate Bill 774 was approved, and the requirement to disclose financial interest with that Senate bill was also changed. Instead of filing Form 1, local government officials are going to be required to now file Form 6. And this is prior to, you know, in order to qualify, not just as a candidate. The requirement is going to be moving forward now, going into effect, and it's going to apply to all local government officials. This includes you, Mayor, and all of members of the council. The big change between Form 1 and Form 6 is that Form 6 actually requires you to identify the value of the financial sources of information. For your convenience, I have provided a sample of Form 1 and Form 6. The individuals that reported this information are redacted, just out of respect. But you can see that Form 1 is about a two-page document and just generally outlines where your sources of income come. Whereas Form 6 is about, in this individual's case, a seven-page outline of all their financials. So it is quite extensive. And frankly, we believe that it is a little invasive. Typically, the resolution before you would challenge this Senate Bill 774 on the basis that, under the Florida Constitution, there is a right to privacy, and under the U.S. Constitution, there is a right to free speech. Typically, the government is not allowed to regulate either of those rights unless there is compelling state interest, and the government is using the least restrictive means. As you can see from Form 6, we do not, we think that there's a very good faith argument legally that this is not the most, this is not the least restrictive means, nor do we really think that it further is a compelling state interest for the state to be requiring local government officials to be providing the amount of financial disclosure in the debt, right, that it presented for positions that are very often unpaid or, you know, very low-paid positions. The impacts of this have been already, have already started to be seen. Various councils throughout the state have begun to resign or have elected not to run for office. I know, Mayor, for example, you sent me an article on this very matter. It was reported, I think, the Tallahassee Democrat. And so what this resolution does is authorize the City Attorney's Office on behalf of the City of Miami Springs to join in a lawsuit challenging the validity of this statute. The amount in question that we're asking for is $10,000, which would cover the trial portion of this. If there's appeals, that would be separate. We would be seeking injunctive relief to stop this, this Senate bill from taking effect immediately and challenging it generally and asking for declaratory relief that the bill is unconstitutional for violating our right to privacy and the due process clause of the U.S. Constitution. If this resolution is authorized today and the city agrees to this, it will not take effect unless ten municipalities also join in. We have received a great amount of interest from other municipalities throughout the state to join in this litigation against this bill. And I'm happy to take any other questions.
And like I said, I don't, I want to make it clear, we don't have to vote on this resolution right now. But I wanted to make sure that you are already aware of what the resolution would look like. Because normally, we ask them, you know, our city attorneys to prepare a resolution, and then we see it later, and this is what it would look like, so it's in front of you. But the reasons that I think we have to discuss this, and the reason that this is so concerning to a lot of cities throughout the state is we're talking about having to make detailed disclosures of anything that you have over $1,000. Personal jewelry, artwork, guns have to be disclosed. And, and even though this is required at other levels, and it's been at the state level and even at the county level, I think the county level is already required before, right? Roger, is this new for the county?
This is new.
For the county also. So we're talking about the governor. This is, my understanding is, this requires more information than even the federal forms if you're running for president. It's just detailed personal information about your tax accounts and how much are in each of your accounts, you know? And while perhaps if you're running for a higher office, this may be pertinent in most cities, particularly in ours, and a lot of cities, we're talking about, you know, we earn pennies on the hour for the work that we do. And to disclose this amount of information, which becomes public record and is posted on the website for anyone to see, is concerning. And the other part of this is that it requires people who are qualifying to run. So we're having an election in 2025. It requires you to file this information, and correct me if I'm wrong, Roger, is if you're qualifying to run. So you may not even be elected, and yet you've put out all of your personal information on all of your bank accounts, not just that you have a bank account with Regent Bank, but what is in it, stocks, the amount. And for this level of government, municipal government, where, you know, for them, and there are some cities where, you know, let's, you know, even in Miami County, there are some cities where the elected officials get a very good salary, and they get perks, they get cars, and they get even a pension and stuff. And in those cases, you know, perhaps, yes, they are willing to disclose all of this personal information. But I think this is going to deter a lot in our community of people deciding to run for office in the future because of what, you know? And, and my other really big problem with this is that normally, when something like this passes, when a law passes, it's gradual. It's like in two years, you have to do this, and, you know, whatever. It should be next term if you decide to run again. But it shouldn't, it's caught all of us because we're serving, and that's why city officials throughout the state have been resigning. They resigned as of December 31st because it applies as to this year. There's nothing like, you know, next term if you run. I mean, so, but this is a very serious, you know, we're talking about a lawsuit entering in a lawsuit, and there's, the initial cost will be $10,000, it may be more, maybe not. I have asked, what are the chances of? And of course, nobody can tell. But my understanding is that there is a lot of interest throughout the state for city officials to not be required to disclose this degree. I mean, this is really invasive, personal information. That if once it's posted out there, it's out there forever. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I just want to, you, you covered a lot there, and I just want to echo the statements. I think that the, the reaction, anybody who's been following the news has, has read a lot about this. I think the reaction is very telling because it is, in fact, so invasive. It's not just about your net worth and your debts, right? It's about all of your assets, like if you, if you were the queen of jewelry that you have in a safe deposit box. It's anything that you own over $1,000. It's jewelry and real estate, debt in your 401K plan. I think that this, I, I, the fact that not only current and serving municipal leaders, but also prospective candidates, why would anybody want to put all of this information out there? Like, I feel like some people are arguing that it puts a target on them to talk about, like, if you have a watch that's worth $2,000, like, why, why would you, why would you run for, and particularly, like you were saying, in small municipalities like us, Virginia Gardens, and small municipalities like this, like, why would you, this is going to deter good candidates from running. And I think that that's, this is so invasive, that that's why you've seen this reaction. I think that it would be, I think that we should join other municipalities. I know that there are other municipalities that have already passed resolutions. We're among the first kind of council meetings already to start this year, but already some other municipalities have joined on. And as the saying goes, when you're going to run a marathon, you look back at the starting line, there's 500 people behind you. Like, I, I think that, I think that we should support this by joining other municipalities because I really think that this just goes way too far in terms of making people disclose, you know, works of art or things that you have, assets that you have, things that you have a value in your home, that you, that I, I just don't see, I, I think that this does more harm than good, and that's why we've seen the reaction that we've seen, that's why it's been in the news. And, and I would favor authorizing this resolution so that we join these other municipalities to, to try to push back on something like this. Thank you.
To the chair. I also agree. I mean, if I don't jump on the runway with this resolution, I might just put in my letter of resignation. You know, serving the public, you're already giving up some of your privacy, right? And I understand while you serve the public, you lose privacy. But I also know that we have our, our other types of privacy rights, which we do not have to disclose and put out there. I think that the legislature, the legislature should maybe put something forward where you have to, you know, to, to apply for candidacy of any type, of any political position. Maybe they should level up by increasing educational background. Maybe do a background check. Definitely a credit check, liabilities check. Because if you have a lot of debt, you may be susceptible to, you know, other things that they're trying to, to avoid and free transparency for. But to go into everybody's, we're talking about everything here, people. I need them to understand that if you see some commotion happening up here, God forbid that this doesn't go through. We're talking about our tax returns. If you have different companies, if you, everything has to be out there. And I think, like what Mayor was saying, we don't do this for the money, clearly. But this, 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 what I'm doing here, I mean, there has to be a balance. I think the requests really outweighs the time and the benefits that we're getting from our city. I love what we do, I really do. But I also, I feel like this puts me at a target too. Because, for example, let's say somebody in the audience isn't like the way that I voted. I caused them emotional distress, and now they know my finances, and now they want to sue me. I mean, we have, we have to look at this from different angles. And it's not, let's say, push comes to shove, and we're walking off the dais. It's not because we want to, but we also have our reputations. We also have our privacy standards that we need to maintain. And these are, you know, these are situations that come up where we need to fight back, and that's why we have laws and rules that can be amended. Because this is going to cause tremendous ripple effect on the state, and it's, it's a disservice to our community and to us because we're up here trying to serve the public, and then we've, we've been, you know, because of a couple of bad, what do you call it, sour apples. You know who your sour apples are? Perhaps you want to maybe have a sign of form, or if there's a public, a request made upon us, an infringement of something, some sort of enough probable doubt. Well, you'll deal with each individual as you need to. You can pull your tax returns. But for me to put my whole life out there for the sake of $5,000, the, the, the balance is just not, it's not there. And I just think it's a huge risk.
And Councilman, it's not just, you know, yourself, but it's also if you have a family, if you have jewelry that you've inherited, artwork.
Or a horse.
Guns, you know, you're putting it out there and saying, this is what's in my house. You know, and some of these things are things that you plan to pass on to perhaps your children. So it's, it, and, and my understanding is, this is a state form, right, Roger? So they can change the form and perhaps up. You know, it's $1,000, I think, is so invasive. If they up the amount that you have to report of, you know, $10,000, $20,000, that gives you a little more leverage because perhaps you're looking at other things. But the personal assets, that, you know, down to the minutia of what you have in your, in your home, your vehicles, you have to list your vehicles. And particularly for our situation of our municipality and so many other municipalities like this, where people serve because they love their community. And going forward in 2025, when we have the next election, I believe that this will deter a lot of very qualified people who have considered over the years, and, you know, eventually the timing is right to run. But then, you know, well, no, I'm not going to because I'm still professionally employed. I'm still, you know, and I really don't want to give out this level of private information.
That's true. I also, I mean, I'm all for transparency. Obviously, that's what, it's something that I think we all want. But I think to get to this point of detail, and I, and Roger, I know we've mentioned it, and the councilman and the mayor has mentioned it, but to be clear, like, father passed away last year, leaves me a watch, and later on towards the course of the, of the year, I did the form, someone sees me with a watch, and tomorrow I could question that I didn't put it on there. And that could start the whole, we have, that type of stuff, right? And you can talk about.
So in terms of actually filing and disclosing, we're saying midway. I, I'm not sure exactly when that would have to be filed, but that would definitely have to be disclosed at some point, right? That, that value, that watch is now yours, that would have to be disclosed. Now, I'm not sure if you had to do, you would have to do an amendment, right, off the bat, on inheriting it, or it would just be with the next cycle. But that's generally correct, I guess, that value. If it's over $1,000, would that happen?
Yeah. Right, so you just leave yourself open to any of the question, anything that you may have. But I think it's just too intrusive to, to our personal assets. Like I said, I'm willing to give as much information as I can about who we do business with, given the accounts, or, but to get to specific, and especially on the assets, you know, a baseball card in my closet, I don't know, it just, it's a point to what? You know, and you are susceptible to people to come by. I mean, my house got, I don't worry about jewelry because somebody probably had it in a pawn shop in Hialeah. I hate to say that, but we know they come over there, and I got it in my house, brought here in Miami Springs. So, but still, I think it's too intrusive to, to that point of inquiry into your privacy. I think it's a little too much.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I don't get it. I, it seems to me like a solution in search of a problem. I'm not sure what problem that this kind of detailed search of information. But first of all, I'm going to agree with everyone on this. I agree we should be joining with others. There, there's always print and numbers. And I was shocked to see the reaction, people technically residing in the middle of the term. That, that was like, wow. So, you know, I, I just don't, I just don't, you know, I, I, you know, I agree with the Councilman Sante on the whole question of, you know, disclosure. I think that's, that's part of all, all, all public officials. I think that's that's part, all 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 public officials have to do this, but the minutiae, the level of things that they're looking at.
Well, let's be clear, disclosure, the form one that we've always had to fill out, fills out, it's that's for your sources of income and your accounts and everything. But not with the detail of, you know, you're providing how much you have in there and, you know, if it's over a thousand dollars. Roger, I had a question regarding um also uh something that's happened uh a few times. Our city is when someone resigns because they're running usually, and for the most part, it's been they're ready for another office. Um, and so we appoint someone to serve on the council during that time in the interim. And usually it's been for a few months, four months or so. Would they also have to fill this out here for? Okay, so they also, so that in itself limits us in the ability to say if any of us resign for health reasons or what's happened in the past. That, you know, when everyone has a right to pursue another office, um our city, um if we appoint someone. And and we've had, you know, the luck of always being able to appoint someone who um has been able to step in and and do a very good job. Um until the next election, that I doubt we would find someone willing to disclose all this to. Yes, sir.
And Mayor, I think you you made a great point. We we all already do Form One. Uh, and it's the same, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, the reason we do that disclosure form is uh, you know, to. Has a deterrence to, you know, corruption, obviously, it's totally corruption. But like, as in, as part of Form One, you're having to name and list all your sources of income, your business entities, your properties, your liabilities, your debts. I mean, that's, we already do all of that. Uh, I think this is just, this is far, far beyond what I I think. Uh, this is very invasive and intrusive to to have to make people. And and again, it's just, it's going to, it's already making people just like, say, you know, this isn't worth it, walk away. Uh, I think this is going to hurt municipalities and I think that uh, it it's good that we're explaining it. But I think that that there are so many people that agree and like the Councilman said, there there is strength in numbers. I I think that we should go ahead and authorize this resolution uh because there are already uh quite a few municipalities that are doing so. And uh, because this is, this is just way too much to expect from from uh public servants in small municipalities.
Roger, could you also explain about the plaintiff? Because if we pass the resolution, there's still the other part of whether we choose to be.
Yes.
Plaintiffs individually as council.
Absolutely. So this resolution authorizes. City attorney to follow on behalf of the city of Miami Springs. However, each of you have the option also as joining as an additional party, an additional named party. So you may have seen in other cases, you'll see the mayor specifically listed in in a particular city or a particular council member. So if each of you elect to be listed as a named party, there will be um a potential. If a judge grants an injunction, so a temporary stop or some type of temporary measure, relief. Uh, in this case, that that would apply to the named parties. So that's an individual choice and it has to be done on a case by case basis. But the benefit of it, as I've explained to, I think, all of you on in your individual briefings. Is that, you know, the named parties would be able to benefit from an injunction if one is granted.
More discussion.
Would we need a motion?
We would need a motion if we wanted to pass uh this resolution.
Should we?
So it's second. Okay, any just further discussion? Call the vote, please. Thanks, Mayor Brando. Yes, Councilman Santino.
Yes.
Councilman Bahad.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Hi.
Mayor Mitchell. Yes, the motion carries. Thank you. I just wanted to uh say, uh, one of the articles in Tallahassee Democrat, they were talking about cities um in near Tallahassee. The entire city council resigned and they said the the city is being run by the city clerk. So I thought, poor Erica sitting here alone. Okay, let's move on to um, we have uh other business, item twelve A. Discussion on Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street in Abraham Track District. And thank you to Sylvia and Alex for being here, our um city plans.
Good evening. So um. My um, I my plan, my evil plan for this. Um, has been distributed and in paper, I believe, and probably also electronically. Um, but I have it on my computer. If you want me to uh put it up on the screen, I'll be happy to do that. We have it, this is. And by way, that would be good, Sylvia, I've been looping on the screen.
Yeah.
For the record, I'm going to, I'm gonna try. I am. Now, here we go. Uh, I'm not allowed.
Second.
We're working. So by way of introduction, uh while we get permission to uh share, I'm just gonna.
Go ahead.
Let you know, thank you, that um this was challenging. And that um it's a very aggressive schedule. But Alex and I both agree, I always run my crazy ideas by Alex. To tell me whether they are actually crazy, but he said it looked doable, so um. I am confident that barring any um external factors, of which there are many. But I will do our best to control them, uh we will be able to um accomplish this process. The way that it's been depicted here. Um, and um, the way that I'm gonna try to do it is um. Start tomorrow, if you approve us to go forward. And uh to have um an initial sort of round of kickoffs. Uh, or rather kickoff events that encompasses both of the areas. We're gonna try to cover it that way and then run the two processes in parallel. Again, it's challenging, but we know that both areas are connected by a series of factors uh in terms of. Um, the dynamics that are happening around them. Uh, they're different in the way that they um probably should be looked at and treated. And there are uh some other factors that I think may um may impact the the final steps of our schedule. Which are the review and adoption. Because as you know, um if we had any kind of discussion about um density. Uh, or some other factors that would be connected to that, for example, building height. There would be some other changes that would have to happen in order to allow for that to occur. Um, but this is going uh from the beginning, starting in January. Um, I would like, uh, first of all, um, your consent for me to go ahead. And have someone join me, whether it is the consultant that I had, that I had thought of. Uh, or uh Dr. Murray from FIU. Um, to uh join us, even if it's just to look over, we don't have, you know, a lot of money to give them. But, you know, just to look over our shoulders as we work in terms of the uses, in terms of the mix. And just kind of tell them, no, that's really not gonna work in this market, or yes, you should try to focus on this, just as a check. And to um help us uh with um, you know, some of data that might be useful to inject into this process. To um, to justify our recommendations. Uh, of course, we have the recommendations of your um Business and Economic Development Task Force. Um, but I think that we need something to back that up in terms of data. As we dive into both of these areas a little bit more closely. Um, the um, this month and um. Essentially, until we get into February, it's gonna be sort of our organization um phase. And um, as soon as I can, I would like to try and sit down with J C and Tammy. And anyone in the city that can help us with communications and all of that. Sort of to understand what we can do as a strategy for um reaching out to the public on both of the processes. Both in general and very targeted, in a very targeted manner. Um, and and Mayor, I'm gonna need your help because you um mentioned a lot of things uh the last time we were here. In terms of those, of the major um influences that we have. That I would like to kind of connect with and bring into the process if we can. Uh, to better understand, you know, how we need to react to those influences. And that includes the airport, that includes uh Freedom Park, that includes um, well, you know. All of those factors of the O T. So um, what I would like to do is see if we can organize something that I'm calling a mini summit. Where we actually open up to the public, we do the outreach to say we're kicking this process off. Looking at these two areas and inviting both, like I said, in a targeted manner, but also in general. Uh, the community to come and give a simple, but also to listen what these factors are. So we can understand, you know, what is happening in context of those projects. Uh, and that, um, by doing it that way, I'm hoping that, first of all, we um will be able to bring some visibility to the project. In terms of the community, so that they participate, uh they're aware of, they know how to participate. And to um get a discussion going so that we can understand, you know, first of all, of all, what what people now today. Want to see, uh, to help them understand also what is possible. And um, to um sort of look at these projects. Um, as factors of what can be accomplished. And from there on, we would just move into sort of drafting principles for each one of those two um districts. Uh, to guide us as we begin to build or rebuild um the actual ordinances. And we know that the the task force made specific recommendations about language, I've looked at that. I've looked at the the previous administrations, um um further input into what, you know, what, what, what was, what is possible, not possible. So we're very aware of that. But I think that we need to um, to really hear a little more, given these new. Or more defined projects now. Because, you know, for instance, the uh, the Iron Triangle has been around for a while. But now we have a little bit more specificity as to what is that is gonna happen, you know, it's still evolving. But we have them involved here, um coming to make presentations to you with concepts and so on. And so, you know, I think that we need to uh look at that again, make sure that we understand what we can recommend. Um, and how we can work with them. And likewise, you know, the um Freedom Park. Um, and um, the relate, sort of related uh development that happens around that. Including the fact that, you know, the county had uh the Palmer Lake Charette from before. The stadium came into play and so what does that mean, you know, um, forgot to mention Miami Dade County. It's one of the potential participants in this summit. So um, that's kind of where my my thinking is with respect to that first space, where we kind of run in in parallel. And then we sort of branch out and begin to draft the ordinances for the two districts. Um concurrently, but separately, until we go through the traditional process of of caring and so on. So, that's where we are. Um, we're thinking that maybe by September, at the latest, we can have hopefully both of them. Uh, ready, at least for review, if perhaps not for adoption. Because as Roger, I'm sure can jump in and and Heidi has also um reminded us. Um, some of the things that we may end up recommending may not be possible until you all look at your chart. So with that, um, if you have any questions for me, we'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, Sylvia. Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Sylvia. Okay, so I have a couple of questions. What what had to give in order to make this schedule work? Because I know that you you felt that it was too ambitious to try to do uh both at once, so.
It is very ambitious. Um, I think we're going to, we are going to have to put some resources. I'm saying not, don't look at him. But he's gonna, he's gonna have to um help me and um other staff that we have are gonna have to um also. Assist um in getting this done. I think that, you know, um, in order to organize the um, the public engagement. Um, um element of it, um, we're gonna have to throw some resources at it. But I think at the same time, uh by running these two processes together. We are going to, I hope, we're gonna be able to be more cost efficient.
You can double down on some things.
Yes, exactly. I'm not gonna have to, yes, I'm not gonna have to, if I if I retain a um. An um, an economic development or a market consultant, I'm not gonna have to hire them twice, for example. Um, we're going to be able to.
Sylvia, also, when you're talking about the external stakeholders, yes, like M I A, they are important and Freedom Tower, the county. Um, you know, they'll look at it kind of, this is Miami Springs. Because realistically, Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street and, you know, that corner of Lejeune, um, it may be more difficult to get them to reengage. For another one, whereas this is looking at the whole future.
Exactly.
And that might lead itself to where we need to prioritize.
I'm also hoping that it will result in efficiencies in our outreach. Because again, if we were to run two processes, which are not from the same area, mind you. But they are sort of in the same general region of the city, that we're not gonna have to bring people twice in succession. So from that perspective, I don't think that we're giving anything up. Um.
What about the E A R?
The E A R, um, we're gonna have to figure it out. But I think that uh we can, we can't give it up, it has to be done, it has to be done. But I think that the way that I'm thinking right now, that that because uh you all did an update. That that was for the previous session, but it was completed last year, that we're not gonna have to do as much. So, that's it's my hope.
Uh, okay, so I have two more quick questions. Uh, have you worked with Lambert before?
I have worked many, many times with Lambert. Um, both with Paul and Eric, we go back maybe fifteen years, maybe twenty years. I forget, I'm forgetting, but you know, we worked um together not only here in Florida, but um elsewhere. Louisiana, Texas, other places. And aside from my relationship with them, C G A works with them all the time as well. In fact, I was in a conference call with Eric this afternoon and I mentioned that, you know, I will let him know what happened tomorrow. Uh, so he's standing by in case we need him. Um, but of course, you know, I'm going to let you tell me which direction you want to go. Uh, Dr. Murray was here last time, um, in December, I guess. And he told me that he is absolutely uh ready to uh participate as well. If that's who you want to work with. It's a little different, you know, the their their approach and their background is different. But, you know, I think that in either case, we'll get um exactly the kinds of results that we need.
In what ways, so like?
Well, uh, Dr. Murray is a planner. Um, with, you know, a background in economic development, um, and Lambert, they're they're economists. So they work in planning projects, they know how to make things happen from the private sector. They they, they work with private developers and with municipalities. And so uh they're coming from that side, um, a little bit different background. Um, and not sure if it's a different perspective necessarily, but you know, I I know that they both can do. Um, the work that we need them to do.
I would, I would feel, if if you do a lot of work with Lambert and and C G A works with Lambert and you guys feel comfortable with Lambert. I think I would favor them just because you already have that working relationship and.
There's not gonna be any learning curve. There's not gonna be any learning curve.
This is what you guys do, so, um and then the last thing I I wanted to uh bring up is i- if we. Because I see that like everything in July or August, August, September, it's a subject to council recess, I mean, just. Can we go ahead and assume that we're gonna have the month of July as council recess and that? August is probably going to be very, very, very uh budget heavy, right, I mean, if we come back to hell this time.
We're here.
Yeah. Why wouldn't we be here?
No, no, the deadline was December thirty first. Oh, I was, whoops.
But I I just, but because I I know that you're trying to make it a little like big, right, with the.
Yeah.
Sure, but i- if we're trying to be conservative and we call July and August kind of like not. I don't wanna count on July and August, is there gonna be any effect to, how will that affect this process, because I know that some things. May need a charter amendment, I just, and as we game plan this, I want to be ultra conservative in thinking that. We're probably gonna be like four, we went five times for the budget processes last year. And July is, we do have our our council recess, so I, as far as I'm concerned, I feel like July and August. It isn't really something that we can count on, so do you envision, how would it would it affect, other than maybe to affect some?
Yeah, I think that's it, it, you know, and it it that's up to you, we can work at our at our pace that we are setting and be ready for whenever you guys are ready for us. So whether it is July, whether it's August, September, or October, we can, we can do that, we'll be ready.
But in terms of anything that has to do with the with the charter amendments or anything like, it's not going to, it's not gonna make or break us, right?
In the sense of.
I just the timing, the timing of of ballot measures.
I think at this point, well, obviously, it it could break us.
Right.
Right, but I think it's only at at the point where, and and this is why I said at the very beginning, that last um. Uh did I stop sharing? Um that last um phase, if you will, of the public hearings. It's in gray, it's different, it says this or that, and it could be even or even farther back. Because it's gonna be up to you and it's gonna be up to what happens with the charter.
The the reason I I bring it up is because the last meeting when we talked about that, this is important for us to consider, right? We said that, you know, if you were just backward planning, just if X date is the date of an election, right? And that's when we're gonna have a ballot measure, you gotta have this on the ballot by this far in advance. And if things get pushed up, I would hate for this to kind of coincide with. Oh, there's an election and now half of us aren't up here and now there's new people that have to push push this across the finish line who may have. A different idea, I I wanna make sure that what we decide we wanna do, that we could see it through, so that's why I'm asking.
Yes.
Uh what, you know, you guys know the deadlines of putting things on ballots, I I don't want it, I don't want this to get pushed back and it'll be like, oh, wait a minute. Some of us may not even be here in April, and now who's who's gonna advocate for these things that we're putting on ballots?
Understood, and um part of the reason why this um schedule is so compressed is in order to. Try and accommodate the fact that there might, you know, there is an election, there might be changes. And the charter would be one of those changes, right? Um I'm gonna let your attorney answer the question about how that could make or break, but. My goal with this would be to try and come before you, at least for first reading, before we get there.
So we're well up, our terms are over in April, twenty twenty five, so what's the drop dead date that anything so that we could see something through in your opinion?
So I'm gonna caveat this from the beginning just because we don't know.
But this is not. Right, right.
So we don't know exactly the content and whether it would trigger or.
Right, it may not.
May not, it may not trigger a a charter question. In the event that a charter question is necessary, those dates change depending on what type of. About timeline we're looking at, we also have to get consent from the county, and these are sort of things that we would need to have, I think, a better idea, and I would have to work with. Clerk as well to figure out with the supervisor of elections if a charter question was necessary, when we could place it. Um I think most often we see ballot questions being added on to either the November or the April uh elections, uh. So we would have to look at that, but again, we're. Not, I'm not entirely sure yet because we haven't gone through this where we might need to go.
And how many months in advance do you need to?
So if it if we're shooting for the April twenty twenty five, I would need at least sixty to ninety days in advance for a charter question. Cause it has to go through translation processes.
Sure.
Then um if we're shooting for November, this schedule does not.
Yeah, that.
Meet the the requirement because I would need it before July twenty six, I believe.
I think that um. I'm sorry for interrupting you very quickly, but I was just gonna say, if you notice, we will be drafting our proposed amendments in May and June. At that point, I think that we would know whether there's something that we're proposing. Maybe it's not gonna be final language, you know, in 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 northernous form adopted, but we will know if there's anything in what we heard. What we think that needs to happen in order to accomplish something, and I'm thinking particularly in terms of the Abraham district at this point. But I don't know, maybe it's also not the thirty sixth. But regardless, I think that by May, we will know whether we need to work on something. That would trigger the need for a charter uh amendment, and at that point, I think I'll need to plan.
Yeah, sure, yeah, I think uh I feel pretty confident that you will have that by me.
Thank you.
I do, I do, especially in the part of the charter. It's almost like it goes inside with every single day, you got everything that you're thinking about. So uh I don't, I don't worry about that, I think Erica just mentioned uh it has to be three months before, not.
Six weeks.
So August, August is one of the elections, right, the primary?
Well, the primary, I think we've already, we're gonna miss, with this timeline, we've completely missed.
You're looking for April, November.
It would be the presidential county.
Presidential, I mean, the the question is.
Let's, let's finish, Councilman.
Yeah, so those, the dates, obviously, November, three months before, you mentioned the dates should be before, so.
No, so since it's a countywide election, their dates are completely different. The April election is a standalone, there's no other election other than the Miami Springs election, so that's more flexible as far as the the. Putting or adding of the charter amendment.
Uh twenty twenty five, yeah.
In twenty twenty five, right.
But uh so November is what I'm thinking of, was November.
November's deadline is July twenty sixth.
Awesome, thank you, so basically, to start ASAP, before even trying to talk about a charter review. I think what you said before, you needed to work with your urban planning uh development team, which will give you your marketing and data, data analytics. So that we can make sure that we actually, the charter that we're proposing to change is for its maximum use. So whether it be residential, commercial, retail, so I think um you're spot on with that because you guys really deal with zoning and planning in conjunction with. What's gonna maximize those uses.
Right.
So when you get to that point, I guess you guys will work together to both propose those charter amendments.
Yes.
So they start.
Please, yes, I'm sorry, it's the consultant, well, so consultant that we bring along would give us. The market data to understand, yes, residential is viable and the right use to maximize.
Yeah, and there you could go ahead and say your height limits.
And it would have to be at these densities which greatly exceed what you have for the other parts of the city. At that point, if he says that and you, and and we would inform you as we go, and if you all agree, then that's when we would start.
So you need to start with them from day one.
That's right.
That's probably gonna bump your schedule up and avoid what Walter, Councilman, what uh Behead is trying to get us to agree on something, maybe by June. If not thereafter, but if I think if you work with whoever you feel comfortable with, whoever has. It's just the speed motion experience, I I don't care, I mean, but. I'm on board with her working with an urban planning development because they go ahead and do their zoning changes, but then we go ahead and we, they tell the dealers and. You can only do these types of properties or these types of stuff, and then they have to go back and change it because it's not gonna work, so I'm on board with that a hundred percent.
True.
And and I think that that's, I think that's the reason why I favor them, like just go ahead and let them know, like, work with Lambert.
Yeah.
What does Lambert do for a living exactly?
They're they're economists and they are uh uh economic developers and market advisors, so.
They they know how to uh.
Yeah.
Across the board, like it doesn't matter what type of.
No, it doesn't matter, they have experience in residential projects, master plans, um. Mixed use, commercial, office, you name it.
Perfect, yeah.
And we've we've done this with them, um from like working for municipalities, the way they were doing here, as well as them separately working. For municipalities, CRAs, economic development offices, and also working for private developers. So that's the other thing, the other benefit that they bring because they know who's working where and on what.
The chair, yeah, basically, we just mentioned the feasibility part, as much as with respect to Sylvia and Alex. I'm obviously the person I do for a living, but feasibility is important, so it's a main Lambert is a no brainer to get them in the picture. Cause you can put a lot of things on paper, this has happened before, this is why things haven't happened in certain areas in Miami Springs. Uh if we put it on paper, but you need to know if it's really feasible or not.
We absolutely recognize that's not our areas of expertise, this is the reason why we work with Lambert so often, because, you know, we. We come up with the the sort of implementation side and they tell us whether it's feasible or not, for itself.
Thank you.
So i- i- and I'm really with you, I was giving the. Well. In the round running, so it's very. This um we do have an. So hey, to to reiterate, I'm I'm agreeing with the the points that have been raised, um that you all work at Lambert. Hit the round running, we have a fairly tight schedule here, um I think November charter changes would be great. But we do have a couple of months before we know when that's feasible in the county with allowance. And then, you know, April next year would be another option, of course, we'd like to see it all done sooner rather than later. Excellent, so um I'm 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 encouraged, by the way, thank you for the presentation, I'm encouraged. I feel for the first time in a while, we really got somewhat deep into something, right? That uh we're we're moving forward, I think, and and it's gonna start moving lightning fast. Um and and of course, any way that we can help.
Thank you.
Facilitate all of them, whether it's public meetings or whatever other things, you know, other uh interest folks. Everything to be able to facilitate the processes, especially upfront, the gathering of information. You know, the buy-in of uh of constituent groups and so forth, you know. As long as we can participate in any way we can without violating any sunshine laws, uh we're in, I think.
Thank you.
Show the rest of us, so count on it.
I appreciate that, and I will, I will take uh, I will take care of your work, I'll show anyone else.
Yeah, and I, just Sylvia, just correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like. Uh because initially, we were talking about picking one project for the versus the other, and we're trying to be ambitious, and I think that there is going to be. Because there's kind of redundancy and aspects of, or steps in the process.
Right.
It seems like that if we can kill two birds with one stone, it doesn't seem like. Only doing one was going, I think, where it's a similar timeline anyways, so.
Yes.
I I think that.
The steps are the same for both essentially, you know, we have a.
It's worth it to just do both.
We have a public engagement, we have a data collection and analysis, we have a drafting period, so the the steps are the same, the components are the same. The reason why they were separate was to sort of try to keep track of how these things were happening in a more leisure way, if you will. Um but that doesn't mean that we cannot do it this way, um it's just, you know, going to require a little bit more. Uh discipline, if you will, and um a lot of coordination with um the city, different departments, and you know, your public information. Person, et cetera, so.
Good, thank you.
Sylvia, so I just wanted to make some comments, um first of all, to you and Alex, I'm very impressed with everything that we've been throwing at you at the last meeting, that. You were able to um present this uh succinct document, which, when I look at it, it really does cover every single thing we've talked about in every planning, so um I I. Um I'm impressed and um and I think it's something we can all follow, um I wanted just to make some points, um. One of the things is in June, uh we can have workshops, you know, we can schedule workshops whenever you feel that you need to. To address this, um since, you know, as Councilman Behead said, July, uh we're on break and then August gets very busy with the budget, but. Even during the budget process, if we have to schedule another workshop to deal with this, that's always, you know, we've certainly done that in the past with another issue. So um keep that in mind, um a few things, um with it, when we were talking about the external stakeholders, I wanted to also mention, well, two things, one is. We have a meeting, and I don't remember when it is, J C, because it was going to be, I think, when we were, it was in December and then it got moved to January, but we were gonna be in Tallahassee, so. It's coming up and I'll I'll let you know so that you can join us with um the airport director to get input on their planning massive. Effects enhancements, I don't know, uh construction, that site, and you know, it it certainly is something that I want to. To know what they have planned and see how we can partner with them to make sure that it's a win-win for both of us. Um the other external partnering dimension, the F dot um. Iron Triangle, but there's another one, it's two different teams, so it gets kind of confusing, but it's another whole team that is doing, um F dot team that is doing the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street. Project, which is really from the Palmetto Expressway and even west of the Palmetto Expressway all the way to Biscayne Boulevard. And so our corridor, the part that impacts us, um there's a lot of. There's a lot of, what would I say, um opportunity here for F dot to rectify things that, you know, they took away the sidewalk, we have no sidewalk on Northwest Thirty Sixth Street. And um we've spoken to them about that, you know, they need to rectify these past conditions, um and making any changes to Northwest Thirty Sixth Street. Um is an opportunity to do that, it's not just to improve traffic flow, it's also to improve pedestrian, make it complete streets. So that's another stakeholder that, even though it's F dot, both teams, we have to keep in mind. Um. The other thing is, um with the charter. Uh amendment, I just wanna put this out there, and it's not something we need to discuss, I mean, to decide on right now clearly. But with a charter amendment, if we put something in the November ballot. Uh first of all, a charter amendment is a big deal in our community, if you know our community, um the first hesitancy will be, we don't want any changes. So it's something that we have to be prepared to, and we just discussed this recently with Roger and Heidi and J C Tammy. Um we have to pre- prepare the um the story, the good story, the good picture. Of what we have in plan for the community before we say we wanna put the charter amendment in because I. I've got a pretty good idea that it won't pass unless they really understand the, and that that's a really good point that has been made. Um to me, and I agree with it, you know, um if if we don't have a really good picture of what we're asking them to do. It the chances are it won't be voted on, um if we aim for the November election, there is a lot of noise with the November election with, you know, the presidential election, the bipartisan. Not bipartisan, the partisan uh politics that are taking place in all this, and a charter amendment on there will likely get lost. And, you know, the attention to it will, and and I'm just throwing this out there, but there is the possibility that a lot of our residents will not take the time to really understand that and just vote it down because, you know, it's just too much.
It'll be met with skepticism.
It'll be met with, but you know, so for me, if possible, the April election is a much better. It'll be met with, but you know, so for me, if possible, the April election is a much better choice. We have the time to, we're focusing in on our community, um elections for our community, issues that impact our community. And we can, we have the ability to really discuss with them without getting into this partisan politics. Um you know, who you're voting for president, which no matter how much, you know, you say it should impact, it will. Um uh to discuss that, and so I just wanna throw that out there, that if we're looking at something, let's not rush with a charter amendment unless we're sure that. You know, we can present to the community what this means and what a good picture it is and uh. Uh why it benefits all of us, um because we want, if we put out a charter amendment, we want it to pass. Um, okay, and I think that's pretty much it, other than, um I just, I, this is, this is wonderful, we're getting there.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Was this part of, was this part of their presentation?
Well, oh, this um airport, we have a diagram of the airport, was that yours?
So that is something that our office provided to the council, um I probably should have explained that too. That's just something that you should consider, that is an FAA overlay um for the, basically all of Miami-Dade County. Showing the flight paths, there are limitations uh that that FAA overlay.
Research, yes.
Um.
It'll affect the Abraham track.
Yes. And the other, um I guess I wanted to mention also when we were talking about who you have on, um I'm all for whoever you feel is the best. Person to work with, um I was very, very grateful to Dr. Murray for agreeing to come, I wanted to get the conversation started, to give us. An overview of, you know, the 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 diversity of issues that we have to consider and um. And how they all interact with each other, and I know, I think the December meeting, and I think you brought it up, just really worked really well with the different speakers that we've had. The presentations, because they all kind of connected to each other, but um I'm all for whoever you feel will get this project moving. Uh the the best.
Yeah.
Way that, you know, it's it's our city.
I'd be comfortable working with either of them, I know them both really well, and I respect the their work, both of them. Um I haven't had an opportunity to work with Dr. Murray yet, we've been looking for that. Um but um you know, since last year, I had already sort of talked to Eric and told him, there might be something. Here that I might want you to do, um and so, you know, I'm super happy to go in any direction. That you feel comfortable, but it is true that um. Eric and I are really used to working together, and there's, there's no learning curve on our side. And uh this is in their backyard, um basically, so, you know.
Okay, that'll facilitate things. Is this, we need to pass a, do we need a vote on this to approve this, to authorize you to go forward?
Take a simple motion, authorize me.
Okay.
To the chair.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion? Call a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Braga?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilman Fadhead?
Yes.
Councilman Pass.
I'm.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes, the motion carries. Sylvia and Alex, thank you again, and your um God, um it's nice, refreshing to have um this vision. Uh for the city and and your professionalism, it's greatly appreciated.
Excuse me, Mayor, I just wanted to to, you had mentioned the meeting with the airport, that's on February fifth.
Okay, all right, so we'll let you know the time, Sylvia, so I think it'd be great if you could join us, that. Okay, so we move now to um reports and recommendations, and we'll start with our state city attorney.
So, uh Mayor, members of the council, I don't have anything further this evening for you, it's a pleasure seeing you all again, happy to be here.
Hey, City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, I have a few items here, um last week, we received the agreement from the state uh for the Veteran Memorial um project. I immediately signed it, um the the RFP is now being reviewed by legal, which I hope to have by this week. And we'll advertise that. The same is the case for the tennis contract RFP that's being reviewed by legal, and once we get that, we're gonna be. Once we get the clear, we're gonna advertise that as well. Um the Oakwood and East Drive project, um we are, I'm gonna be setting up a pre-construction meeting. Where the contracts, those contracts are also, I think those are about to be finished with legal review. We'll get those signed, and then we'll start, we're gonna schedule the pre-construction meeting, each of the nodes to proceed. Um so you'll see work on that starting hopefully in February, you'll start seeing work there. Um the shade cannons at Prince Field are currently being installed, uh so you'll see, if you see the people working on those contracts, that's what they're doing. You don't see them wicked, but they're getting it ready, the batting cages, uh installation of the batting cages, the schedule starts February. Um the golf course, a- as you can see, we've been working on some of the details out there, the the tree trimming crew was out there. Last week, so a lot of the open road has been already trimmed back, getting ready. Um as Councilman Fadhead saw last week, he was the most recent tour that I gave, um last week, the back nine is still growing in, it's. And it is what it is, we're waiting, this weather that we've been, this weird weather we've been having, like it doesn't help, but we're still at the Mother Nature's mercy. Um so we're still moving forward there, getting all the details of. You know, completed, so that we're ready for for when we move up. Um next week, as you know, on Monday, we're heading to Tallahassee, it's cold, it will be cold, so dress warm. Um and and so we, I'm working with Jose Malavias for, to schedule all the meetings that we're gonna have on Tuesday and Wednesday as well. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, J C, Tammy, you have any events or anything?
To look before that, I'd like to call us, all of us wish Roger happy birthdays.
Oh, happy birthday, happy birthday.
Um the registration for rec campout is uh open, and that event will be held on Friday, January twenty sixth through the twenty seventh. From five to nine, uh sorry, five P M to nine A M overnight, it's forty dollars per ten. So registration is open, that's it.
Thank you, Tammy.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And uh when we last met, we said that we would uh have a January workshop on working. Uh I don't know if you guys had my opportunity, I went through the uh the preliminary report already, uh but have we, have we set a date?
So the suggested date is January thirtieth, that's, yeah, it's a Tuesday, you'll be getting something in your emails or text messages tomorrow. So you need a. No, no, there isn't. All right, thank you.
Yeah, uh let's see, let's start with Councilman Vassilis.
Okay, well, thank you, um first of all, happy New Year, everybody. I think we've started off the year, I'm really pleased with this meeting and. Courage, um so a couple of things, so we're all familiar that the, you know, we all heard of the incident on New Year's Eve. With James Fulton at his home, and no stray bullet, and I I I raise it for two, for two reasons, one is. Some of us have talked about individually, how do we continue to raise awareness of the dangers? Uh using firearms, discharging firearms. Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't, you didn't know, okay, I'm sorry.
Clarify that it was celebratory shots at New Year's.
So uh.
Resident, a resident.
Yeah, it was a, uh a stray bullet struck a resident in the arm. And 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 uh came out the other one, in the direction, and um, you know, it. There's a process of, you know, getting all the medical things done, it's gonna take possibly surgery, possibly not. But it also raises questions about our 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 efforts continually talk about the dangers of folks firing. Firearms in the air as part of us, the New Year's celebration, and um and uh. Well, a resident is suffering, you know, because you talked about, but um, uh you know, something to think about. In terms of our information processes moving forward. Um um War Memorial, for today that the contract with the state has been signed, which means that sometime next week. Or 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 around that time, um the RFPs can go out, so it'd be great. And by the way, um J C has in his office the latest rendition, you should go look at that rendition, I was, I was so impressed. With the work of Manny Richel and others, you know, I I think that, uh you know, we come close to that. The city's not not gonna have to have me anyone, in terms of a war memorial, it's gonna change the landscape of the area. Curtis Parkway, and 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 it will be an honorable thing that we do for a long time. That memorial needed to be repurposed, and moving right along, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great um addition to the city. And its commitment to military service of our of our folks, especially those. Who pay the uh the ultimate price with their lives. Um last thing I want to mention, I have to do with Northwest Thirty Sixth Street, you mentioned something about we lost sidewalk on Northwest Thirty Sixth Street. You're talking about sidewalk, the the reason I ask this question is, I rarely walk on Northwest Thirty Sixth Street. I don't have any particular reason to go there, but on Sunday, uh family were coming back from. From uh from an event, and Myra wanted to do it, so we pulled into IHOP, I usually park in a disabled stop, but you gotta walk on the sidewalk. And it's about fifty feet you have to walk, and it is scary as hell. To walk on that sidewalk, people are flying down the street, uh I felt really. Uh I and I don't scare very easily and things like that, but it just occurred to me, and I told Myra, I said, listen, walk closer to the, you know, this side of the sidewalk. It's not a very wide sidewalk, and at the speed that people are coming down on the, you know, heading towards Palmetto. Um on all three lanes, people are flying down that street, and so uh it it made me think about. How to bring it about, I'm not sure, you were talking about that part of the sidewalk, but that's a scary piece of the sidewalk, I tell you right now. And I and I, but I have noticed, I've been on Thirty Sixth Street many times, driving both directions, lots of hotel patrons. Going to particularly IHOP, and from the IHOP, the other hotels, and they, you know, they're just walking along La La Vida. But, you know, that's a, that's a dangerous area, so keep an eye on that.
Thank you. Councilman Fadhead?
Uh thank you, I think we're getting, just to to underscore what Councilman Vassilis said, um. I'm excited that we're getting started on all these projects and uh looking forward to the New Year and Happy New Year, everyone.
Um I don't really have anything to report, just thank you, J C, for taking me on the golf uh golf course tour. It was uh giving me the whole perspective of what's going on there. Yeah, happy birthday, Roger, I already signed to you earlier, so I'm gonna say to you again. And I have a question for the Form Six, where can we go as constituents ourselves to go ahead? And search for Form Sixes that are actually completed, how we just, is that like a special process, or is there an actual website to know?
Oh, yes, there's a, there's a, there's a website that has an entire database of every official that is required to file Form Six.
And. What is that website?
I.
Forward to you, please, the state of Florida website.
It is a state of Florida website.
That way, if people are like, oh, well, well, just go look for yourself with public information, so if you wouldn't do it, you know. Just just to get clarity, because I, I mean, I'm not into that, so I wouldn't know where to look for that, I just wanna see how accessible it is. Because maybe that may under my decision, but as far as it goes, as of right now, it's pretty um, it's invasive. I'm a very modern person, I love transparency, I think all I've shown up here is transparency, but when it comes to. To personal matters, I feel like just everybody else, as a human, right, I mean, what can we keep to ourselves at this point? But anyways, um hopefully it works out, and hopefully we are continue to serve, and we just really love to serve our community. That's it, I'm happy to be.
Councilman Santin?
Yeah, I think uh it's still early enough to wish everybody a Happy New Year, I don't think our next meeting, that'll happen, but uh so. Happy New Year to all our residents, a prosperous and healthy new year.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and um I wanted to uh. Uh to thank the Women's Club, the Miami Springs Women's Club for the fantastic annual event. Again, another year where they um uh did, they held a wellness fair for our community. What a great event for our community, for visitors, um they have so many participants, and Elizabeth Fisher and her whole. Um team and the entire Women's Club uh does such a great job for our community, um so thank you very much for that, greatly appreciative. Um I just wanted to mention with the F dot councilman, um to clarify this, and I keep clarifying it because people are confused. You know, there's three F dot projects, Quincy Seventh Avenue, the one on Thirty Sixth Street, F dot had. Uh meetings, public meetings here at our rec center, um at the Aquatic Center, I think it was, what, November or October? To discuss that, and and the issue is that years ago, before any of us were on the council, F dot in order widened. Northwest Thirty Sixth Street to accommodate more traffic, and in doing that, they made the lanes the least wide that they can, which I don't know what it is. Ten feet, something, and took away the sidewalk, you know, or took away a large portion of the sidewalk and left basically no sidewalk, because it if you. Are in a wheelchair or walking or any difficulty, you you don't even have three feet of clearance in some areas. Um we did a walkthrough with F dot in September, Tammy, J C, um they had a team of walking, and they saw it themselves, you know. So this, it was done in fairness at a time when pedestrians were not really thought of, you know, given much importance. Um you know, twenty, thirty years ago, I don't even know when that was, um but now that they're looking at. Improvements to Northwest Thirty Sixth Street of traffic flow, uh capacity improvements and all this. Um our position needs to be that in doing that, you need to rectify past. Um uh harm that you did to our city, basically, all those businesses have no sidewalk, and like you said. Um if someone's staying at the hotels, we have so many hotels, and you're walking to McDonald's, you see the families walking single aisle. Um it's uh so this is an opportunity for whatever work that gets there, that we not just get a little more sidewalk back, that we get a really nice pedestrian. Area facing Northwest Thirty Sixth Street, which is our living room, so I just wanted to clarify that, because it's the, you know. We talk about F dot and the different projects, and it is confusing, um but there is one on the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street corridor. Um that that impacts us and and should be. Um a benefit to us, um you know, in whatever's done there, um there's a lot of opportunity for our city to be better off. Okay, and with that, I wanna wish everyone a Happy uh New Year, we've got a lot of exciting things planned for this year. I think we accomplished a great deal last year, and it really, it's the community, it's, I feel so blessed to be part of this community. I can't imagine living anywhere else.